Not a problem.
Oh.
Before I go on to item number two, does any board member wish to make a motion?
Um, oh, I forget what the words are.
To seal the minutes, wait, wait until the ladies back down.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to seal the minutes of preceding non-public sessions until such time as imperative the board feels it is wide and prudent to unseal them?
So move.
And I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion here, none, others in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Now I'm gonna look and ask if Mr. Pivero would mind giving precedence to the young ladies who have a PowerPoint presentation. Thank you. In that case, we'll move right along to fundraising for playground equipment.
Thank you for this opportunity. I have some pictures I didn't include in the presentation, but I wanted to share with you, um, I don't know how many people are aware of the current state of our playground.
Would, would you please cover your name?
Uh, my name's Erin Stevens.
Thank you.
So I'm actually a parent of the Friends of Newton, Hampshire Recreation Commission. We created a nonprofit for the town which will benefit parks and recreation activities. So our first initiative is Greeney Park Playground. So I wanted to give you just one picture, um, because at first we could have played around with the league down. Our swings are breaking, we have bees coming out through the stands. I question, is the surfacing inadequate under our structures? Like they're rusting, the paint is chipping. So I don't think it's something that we want to do. I think it's something that as a community, we need to do this. It's really part of the park and it's sad, and I don't think you're a bad, as a community, because I think we have great people here. So I really hope that everyone will kind of support this and get us, get behind us on this. This is one of my board members.
Hi, there's Erin Walker. Just to kind of piggyback on what Erin was saying, I think that the state of the playground, it, it makes it a part of something that people from the community aren't really seeking out to go to. When I bring my son to a playground, it's typically in a surrounding community. So I'm driving anywhere from ten to twenty, even thirty minutes to other communities to bring him to a nice playground, because when I see the state that our current, our playground is currently, it, it doesn't seem up to date, it doesn't seem state. So a lot of, I can imagine a lot of the families are choosing to bring their children outside of the community when we know that they, we have the potential to have a really wonderful space for him to stay around town.
How many advanced slides?
Right, yeah, just let me know.
Okay. So, um, like I said, we created a nonprofit with the guidance from our, um, our Newton Recreation Commission. I actually went to a meeting, they're giving me a lot of great advice, which I really appreciated, to kind of get the ball rolling on this. I didn't know much about it, I had no idea how expensive playground equipment is. So they were very helpful. They suggested I start this nonprofit to get the ball rolling. So now, um, we are made up of six members. All of our members will be here tonight, but we have a lot of, we have a firefighter, we have a nurse, um, and we have somebody that just had a new, so that's right. So we have Jim is also on our community, we have her. Um, so we've been really, we're pushing this initiative. Um, to go to the next slide. So we started a Facebook page, we're at a hundred and eighty members, and I know some of you who are as lucky, men have already joined, which is great. And I'm posting all the updates and plans, I posted this PowerPoint, um, and so we're just gonna keep, keep moving. We know, we want the playground first, but we expect this to be, um, a group that continues to support the community. So I think what happened with the last playground is that, you know, we put up the money, but then it wasn't maintained. So we're hoping to, the goal is a hundred thousand dollars, and we don't want to spend all the money, we want to keep some of it so that we can continue to make improvements, and we don't want it to fall apart again. So, um, we're trying to be really responsible and thoughtful about this process as well. To the next slide. So I'm gonna talk about a few different, um, groups, vendors that we're, we're looking at. We wanted to do our research, so there's three of them. All of them are very reputable and have done hundreds to thousands of playgrounds depending on which one they're looking at. Um, but they all have a community build option, which is great. That could save us a lot of money. Um, this is Premier Park and Play. I really liked this company because they did two local playgrounds, which are right next door in Plac Dow. I just visited one and it looks really nice. They also have a phase-in option, so if you don't raise all the money once, we can do parts of the playground, you know? To me, it's like, even if you could replace the swings, that would be a huge benefit to the community. So I hope that as time goes on, we can continue adding to it. They also have the ancient swing storage section as well, so I like that community keeps going. Um, this is just, I gave three options from Premier Park and Play that they quoted us on. So this is the cheapest option, forty seven thousand, um, but it includes the entire playground, the installation and the surfacing. Next one, this is option two, eighty thousand, um, and this is for everything. So you could save thirteen, almost fourteen thousand dollars on the installation if you were to do a community build. Um, this is the third option, sixty thousand, um, which is a really decent sized playground. I was actually really impressed with the, the cost. Um, and when I visited that playground in Plac Dow, it didn't seem like we were sacrificing any value. I think this is a smaller business, um, so they're charging a little bit less, I think, because there's not a big player in the playground arena. Um, but there's still, really, people have a ton of recommendations in the area, they definitely, it's in the local area, so I really like them.
And just something to point out with all of the, um, with all of the models here, and I know it says it in the PowerPoint, but just that they offer something for a variety of age groups, their doctors and medico partners, and doctors and medical providers, going to be portions of the structure that are appropriate for a variety of age levels. So we have a wider, um, portion of the community that can come in.
And this is all playground, uh, commercial playground equipment, like ASTM certified, appropriate for public playgrounds. Okay, and to the next one. Um, this is an extra creative recreational systems. I just wanted to throw these in here to give an idea of the different prices we're getting from different companies. Um, it's awful great business, a really nice, big structure. Um, this one was sixty five thousand about. Um, obviously, these are things that we're gonna, once we raise the money, how much do we have, we can determine which playground to go in. And then the last one was actually the first company I contacted, Land State Structures. They have done really hundreds of playgrounds, but they're more well-known, so I think they should be charged a little bit more. Their structure, they're beautiful, and they're really creative, um, and I think it lasts a long time, but a price comes along with that. So if you look at the last slide, um, you know, a playground that's not as big, but still eighty thousand dollars, um, so it is a little more pricey, but, um, you know, depending on what you're raising, we'll, we can kind of make a decision from there. And I think we're, um, we're all the women that we work with the Recreation Commission before we make a decision, and we have a really nice forum on the, um, Facebook group, because I can actually have people vote on the structure that they like. But right now, it's all about approval from you all. There's no way we're gonna start fundraising and taking advantage of people without thinking sure that the town is going to allow this to happen eventually. So, um, that's why we're here today. If you go to the last slide, we're seeking, I like the only shark saying here, what we're seeking from you. Unfortunately, we're not gonna get a hundred thousand dollars here, I know that, but, um, it was just like YouTube approved us to start the fundraising through the events, a GoFund, a GoFundMe page, um, and some signs posted around town, making a part. Um, once we raise the money, for most of them, we've got old equipment and install new equipment, um, and we're willing to do a community build if we can get enough volunteers. We have people selling levers as well, whatever you need us to do, and I'm happy when we kind of get, step, like, after the process, we cross like a big threshold that, okay, we raised this much, I'm happy to come back and, you know, explain kind of what our next step is. We're gonna keep the community involved in what we're doing, so. Yeah, so I also just wanted to say thank you, because we al- we already got some nice donations from Jim Ryan Construction, a hundred dollars, Meek and Pika, a hundred dollars, and Six Child Realtor for two fifty, so, we have started.
Are you planning on eliminating the skate park?
Um, yeah, I, thank you for mentioning that, because I added something on my list of approvals, um, which is to either fix up or resurface or paint the skate park. Um, removal's an option as well, but I could, you could come back and get approval for the removal, unless you believe it to us, um, but I know it's an eyesore, and we definitely either wanna fix it up or remove it.
Do something.
The playground is the first priority, but it's definitely on the list.
Hi, Julie McCarthy, Newman, I just wanted to address that specific question. Um, if it would be a cost analysis done on the requirements to bring that up to a safe playground, safe portion of the playground versus ripping it out and possibly incorporating something else at a later date, provide another fundraiser to replace that? I wouldn't wanna turn around and tear it up, because we don't know the use of it. You know, if it's constantly being used, if it's got several kids playing on it every day, we don't wanna turn around and take that away from them and leave a structure behind or replace a place with a structure that they have no intention to use. So the, the frequency of use would also be incorporating a good cost analysis of either surfacing or replacing, removing.
Have you, have you met with the Recreation Commission?
No. Yes, we have, and we haven't reached, broached that subject with them, because we want to take this first step.
I, I, I'm talking in, in general.
Yeah, yeah, they were actually the ones that, um, helped you the whole process.
Oh, okay.
I started the Facebook page, and then I do the nonprofit, um, and get the ball rolling, and then they suggested that I come to your town meeting, so I, anytime we kind of see the big step in the process, I go over to their meetings and feel, on what's going on and ask for their guidance here, so, yeah, we're definitely.
Because quite, quite honestly, I, I love the idea that you're raising money, but I do believe that the, the people of the town should be supporting any, can't say the word, any work done down there at Greeney Park, I, sorry, I have a speech about, and I cannot say that word tonight, uh, should be done, there should be a certain amount of tax dollars that is spent on that piece of property, and it shouldn't be just up to you guys to try to raise every penny of this.
Well, that was our plan. I, I did talk to the committee and say, whatever money they raise between now and March, that we could put in a warrant article for the rest of it and see if the tax pay will raise the rest of it.
Except for it needs to be between now and January.
Right, January. So we can do a warrant article depending on where we are. I think they need the approval first, right? You need a motion?
The intention is to have a minimal impact on the funds from anybody from the town of trying to, trying to put this, you know, like she said, if we raise a hundred thou- a hundred thousand, we're not gonna spend a hundred thousand just on the playground, we're gonna reserve a key to maintain it for the years to come.
Well, it, it would be nice if the Conservation, I'm sorry, the Recreation Commission put something into their budget for maintenance.
Yes.
Because if being town property, we should be maintaining especially the sizable donation.
Um, I was shocked that the budgets in current town is very low, very low. I don't know how you were able to maintain the property.
Apparently not.
That's, that's a problem with most departments in the town, including the fire and police departments. They are woefully underfunded.
Um, we also got a generous, generous check from Holman about you. Um, he is the owner of Cuzzellini and, um, was a construction company. He just gave us three thousand dollars. So thank you.
Congrats.
Um, he's also offered to meet up at the park and look at possibly, um, resurfacing some of the skate park and helping with some of the research and things like that, so it's just very exciting. Well, thank you so much for your time.
And thank you for doing this. This is a tremendous community.
I'm gonna motion first.
No, but I'm gonna motion first, but I'm still.
They're really helping for us to move on.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for all your efforts, because this is good for our community and our town spirit, and it's so needed. My pers- it's my personal opinion speaking.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm allowed to say that.
It'll get better if we have people involved and we have a community day.
It'd be fabulous.
Um, we have some events as well, that are, we're gonna have a trophy at the Memorial School, the World Series Trophy, as a fundraiser.
So what do-
But, um, do you need some raffle?
Uh, if you need some raffle goods, I own a jewelry store.
So what motion do we need to make?
I guess we don't.
We don't need a motion?
Just acknowledge that they're fundraising.
We're acknowledging, I mean, we just have to make sure, just from liability, that when we go through everything, make sure the Ts and Is are dotted, that we do that, right?
We're just allowing them acknowledging that they're gonna be raising funds in town and so, hosted.
Absolutely, yes.
So, yeah, you're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
When, when it comes to things like, uh, approval to remove old equipment, that's the Recreation Commission's area.
Okay.
And what about to install new equipment, is that the Recreation Commission as well?
To install new equipment, who's that, Rec?
Yeah, that, that would go through the Rec.
Well, if you do a community build, yeah, it'll just, it'll all funnel through the Recreation with your, with your group and just work together.
Yeah, the community build probably will have to come to the Board of Selecting, because then we're talking about, um, potential liability.
Right, waivers.
And the town would have to check it out. Check with our insurance companies on what we would need for paperwork on that.
So I don't need you to sign anything, right?
You sure? Now, the, just one thing, you mentioned warrant later, is that something to revisit?
Well, say if they, if they only raise like forty grand and they need seventy, we can do a warrant article for thirty. If it goes, it goes.
Well, it's a community park, so that would make sense.
It's up to the taxpayer, right.
It's up to the taxpayer.
And you do have a banquet, or money's getting front, uh, deposited in, you have a treasurer and all that?
Yeah.
Nonprofit.
We have a bank account right down the street, that I can donate as well.
Okay, great, good.
That's great.
Thank you, we, we do appreciate it.
Yeah, woo, good job.
Okay, now we can return to our agenda.
Do you want your pictures back?
We can give those to her later.
Okay, we can post them online.
Take some next.
Thank you. Mr. Pivero, are you on this same subject or?
I am, the same subject.
Oh, oh.
Um, I'm gonna try to tie this all together real quickly. A number of years ago, the park was talked about upgrading, different from what you guys are looking at, it was a lot better than the previous go at it. What you're gonna find out through the insurance company is the separation rules. You guys probably have already figured this out, looking into it. There's spacing, separation rules, skateboard park, because when we looked at before, the ground, the, the round footprint was getting very tight to start putting more playground equipment in there. It's achievable, add to this in a minute. Who would have had a fence on there, mostly opening day, baseball, softball. We don't have enough parking in Greeney Park, there's just not physically enough room to put cars in there. It turns into a pretty good nightmare, especially opening day, and then certain baseball Saturdays and Sundays, so we gotta look at expanding the park and make sure you guys more room for, for park expansion down the road. Somebody, I'm gonna show that somebody else needs to look at, when you pull in the Green Park, there's a conservation trail out back, and there's an all wooded area there, not left. You should look at expanding that park in that area, so that we don't end up with a problem on opening day and other times when we need more space down there, because it gets limited fast. Like, when baseball season ends, there's plenty of time. But during that duration, for that X amount of weeks, we need more parking spaces down. We wanna plan to see now what we're talking about there, so it all gets incorporated and not lost in each other.
So in other words, you might also wanna be in touch with the Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Because they have control over that, their property.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's gonna be a joint group, I don't know, you can designate the, to be the watchdog for that, or for that, you need somebody to tie it all together.
Possibly, once you sort of, you start your fundraising and you pick out what you want to do to benefit the town, we could have a joint meeting where you have people from Rec, Conservation, um, I'd kick in somebody from Planning, but just to make sure that we're not expanding a land, any land use issues, um, and have a joint meeting where everybody gets together and everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, I would think you wanna do that a little prior, I mean, they're already on their way. Well, that, yeah. You might wanna do that a little sooner, so you've got enough time, and kind of knows, unfortunately, how slow the gears turn here, so if we could get on it sooner, I think we would benefit.
Who determines capacity and things like that? Capacity, how many spots are needed, is that just the, the? So, so whoever's behind helping planning has to take it all.
Actually, the town engineer could probably.
That's a good idea.
Come up with the number of parking spaces that we can fit into a certain area.
And what's needed. And here comes Chief. He's like, thanks.
Yeah, I just, I was thinking I'd jump in for a second. With, through the baseball, they combined it with Kingsville.
Also get double.
This year, we're really out for a period doing it. They're gonna swap and go to Kingston, um, next time around. Hopefully, in the meantime, we can do something. I had to make a decision on opening day to turn East Street into a one-way, um, because of the traffic that we have. There was a safety concern on the way around, I had one officer down there, stopped down there for, I don't know, six hours, couldn't get, uh, five apartment couldn't get there, put me down. I think we desperately need to expand that, it's a nice park that we have, um, if we invest the, the time and the money into operating the sunset and making it a more userable spot, I think, you know, what we need to look at is that, like, inside that land, that's there, if you can get out of it. It's not a empty residential area right there, there's a couple of us who are directly across the street, um, but we have that in development up on the right hand side, so it's, the traffic isn't what we have fifteen years ago, seventeen years ago. We're getting a lot more traffic, there's a lot more people coming to use it, and it's a good, it's a lot, um, teams are coming up and using it, and they're coming, they're bringing their grandparents, they're bringing their parents, and, um, it's a great thing that it makes it a nightmare for us, as far as, you know, traffic can proceed. We need to try to have some events down there. Initially, we had an open day up at the school. I think if we expanded that again, I think we'd be able to probably house it on there. I don't know how much the land of the town has down there.
How many, I saw five plus acres. It's quite a few, a lot of it's on, at least five acres, I think.
To put what brings that in, and wait, but then we have a bigger dance district, not enough, um, so like, I don't understand, I'm not sure who the person that have to scare that, and what, if you see the youth involved in it, like, I think that's the one person that we look at is expanding that platform.
And actually, since you have a Facebook page for this, you might ask certain questions out there, like, how many people use it, uh, how many people use the skateboard park, how many people use the, the present equipment? We know that the ball fields are almost sacred, um, but they have limited use, they're not used every single day the way a playground could be, you know, a parent could, in the summertime, take their child daily to the playground. But on Facebook, you might be able to get people to admit that, yeah, I, I don't know if you could actually play on the tennis court that was down there.
And they, they still use it, basketball, skate park is still using it, you could go down there several times a day, and it's, it's, it's down there every day.
Okay.
I mean, they're using it, I'm excited, maybe ten days, probably eight or eleven. They're still using it every, every day, and stuff, so.
Okay.
Stuff we do, if we operate it, if we, if that, you know, if we, you know.
Well, that, that's the, it's proverbial, if you build it, they will come.
Do you assume, maybe, do you think there's gonna be as many people using just the playground as they will be when there's a ballgame? Aren't those kind of separate use, slightly?
You're probably not gonna have people trying to use the playground while there's a ballgame going on, simply because you cannot.
Well, I mean, at the same time, I'm just saying that the parking issue, if there's a new playground for that age range, up till twelve, was it?
On the way.
Yeah, two to, till to twelve, I think, so, yeah. I mean, you're gonna max out at a certain number, that's the parking you're looking for, for the playground portion, but in general, to preventatively check all these things is really important.
It's one of those things, if we're going to look at park, we should take, we should-
Yeah, absolutely, right.
It's really, this opening day is really the, the only problem on baseball.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna ask, but I, I live on East Street, and the day I see it is opening day.
Okay.
And I never had admission of the one that I know of, because of my community, because of the officers.
Right.
It's maybe not too bad for opening day, honestly, which is that, um, I don't wanna speak for my community, I mean, our, our, we are a private group, you know, and our first party is community, I think we're all really passionate about the playgrounds. Um, it doesn't mean that we're not open to that, but I think the playground is our first priority.
Yeah.
But if, I don't know, if we work together and we're able to raise money, you know, um, if I can go within, um, so we're certainly willing to go to Recreation Commission meetings, and I'm very willing to, I'm talking about it, right?
Jim? According to the assessment card, there's thirty acres there.
Okay.
I think some of it's wetland in the back, I remember looking at it. Waving in the back, back? No? Okay, good.
Some of it could be, but.
Further down the street.
Okay, well, there's thirty acres, that's good. Parking key.
I'm gonna go into this, the cabinet of board, we mentioned two things. I'm not trying to say any of the funds or any of the efforts on the playground, just put it to the park, two separate.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
What I started to say was, when we did this playground research four, five years ago, when they took the playground, and it was an insurance company with somebody else, there dimensionally wasn't enough room because of the spacing, and there was a whole criteria for the playground, it's kind of science in itself. You can't be so close to another thing, because if it falls off a glove of, uh, padding has to be such, under it's a nobody can turn. And then there was also a separation between the skateboard park and the playground.
Right.
For another criteria.
Right, and the, the-
The reason why I bring this up is because that all might spill out into what's parking now.
Ah, okay.
I wanna make sure that you're not, I'm just not saying parking is just for Newton Baseball, I think you might find that that new park ends up coming out with parking, it's not really needed for us.
No, it's not. If, if there was any, if it goes into the parking lot, we would address that here. He had the guy who had the skate structures, he actually, he gave his clients, he, um, obviously, I wanted to just give us some ball park access, as he was further along in the process. I'm sure one of the guys, the playground inspector, who checked it.
That's, yeah, that one.
That way it just would be that at all, um, and going into the parking lot that was never.
Well, let's go, because I know they did it before, I think it was the insurance-
It was the insurance people who knew all that?
Yeah, the, the town insurance company people got into it, and they had a whole-
Okay.
Check with them, definitely.
And they made a good criteria.
He's John, like, the president of the playground, he was like, by, you gotta help me to decide a area, so that it would be never a concern for him.
Okay.
Um, I don't hear any problems.
Yeah, there, there is actually one other thing you might wanna take into account, and that is a separation of age groups, usually skateboard parks.
Yes, it was.
Maybe that was there.
Usually teen and a little bit older.
Yeah.
It's, you know, one time you didn't have a problem, but they sometimes use language and other things that are inappropriate for younger children, so usually you try to keep things like that separated.
Okay.
I'm not saying that anybody that uses that skateboard park would in any way say anything rude or socially unacceptable, but it can happen.
And a two or three.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm not an advocate of the skateboard, I mean, the new park is one we need, we've tried it three or four times, we hope this one keeps some momentum and gets it to, to grow.
That, that would, that would be nice.
You want to ensure success, that's clear. You're helping su- sure success, so there's no pitfalls along the way, you find out after the fact. Exactly.
Could that be a separate warrant article, the extension of the parking lot?
Does that need to be a warrant? Does that need to be a warrant article?
Because I'm not worried about the money for expanding the park lot, I think we can get people with power to expand the park lot.
Yeah, we just need approval.
Right.
So conservation, you said, for that to get.
Uh, conservation and planning.
So do we follow up on that?
I'll talk to Trish, tell her about it.
Okay. Okay. Exciting.
Very good. Thank you. Moving along, we'll go to item A, fire station, fire station sprinkler system?
Update.
You're back. Fire station. Sprink, sprinkler, sprinkler system update.
Fire station was striking. Okay, Mike Lomero, construction manager, New York Fire Department. Last week, we had a meeting. We talked about a couple of auctions on the table. And how much more we could share, was, that was all public.
That was a public meeting, right, it was the.
So I'm gonna share it all, which is good, I like it that much better. So we have a contractor that we've been working with on the sprinkler side of the fire station. He was the contractor that did the work, the original work, the scope that he did is what he did. He didn't shortcut anything or anything of that nature. The criteria changed towards the end of the job, what we needed for our front of the sprinklers system. So we brought that same contractor back on board to work with SFC Engineering to move this along to satisfy the state requirements and the state finances. Started this back in May. There was a little bit of movement at the beginning, and then it just kind of, for all sorts of different reasons, died out. Non-responsive, partial drawings, can't get this guy, this guy's on vacation, it's just dragging back. Couple of weeks ago, Jeff Murphy and myself, who's SFC Engineering, talked about it. And it was, again, through a joint meeting we had last week with the board selection, to look at different auctions and different contractors that are open. We started working with one. He's been very responsive. He gave some pretty good budget, every numbers to me today. Not a half quote yet, probably yet, maybe tomorrow, the following day, to follow board selection. I'm not surprised, his number's a little bit higher than the original quote we got on the mechanical end of things. It would increase it by about eleven thousand dollars. Honestly, I'm a deal breaker, especially with the first guy that's just not being responsible at all, who's not getting that stuff for once, once and months of time. So I would recommend you go with this guy, give him some more money. Kind of stakes for you guys, you've gotta find the money. But I'm telling you, on my end, I, I, right now, we're dead in the water for four months, waiting for grounds and pools and everything else.
I assume you're gonna be bringing us a contract for this gentleman?
Yeah, maybe you have it tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, we, he, and, and, and that was very good, it's kind of rushing putting this in, we brought him in only a little week ago. He's diverted a lot of stuff and shot every time to give us some numbers.
Did he say when he would, I know you have to order a lot of equipment, this would commence, should we go forward?
No, I haven't even got that.
Also.
You got that file.
He didn't discuss that yet.
As soon as you have a contract and some hard numbers, the board will call a special meeting, if need be, to discuss and potentially sign.
The contract?
Yes.
We'll just see it, yeah.
All right, and, well, we won't, we won't money this down, because at the end of the last meeting, and I didn't feel overly comfortable with it, but it was directly through the board selection that I signed.
Okay.
Is that what you were gonna say?
The board does not sign the contract? You hired Mike to do that?
Right.
Okay, just so you know.
Don't we have to approve it?
No, actually, it's probably.
So it's all.
Matt, Matt Coro was the one that brought it up at the end.
Right, okay.
And summarized the whole thing at the end of last week's meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, but if the money's not in here, we're still gonna.
Well, that, before he signs the contract, he's gotta make sure we could find the money.
That would really.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
That would be perfect, we'd get it down.
Because otherwise, he has a contract.
Yeah. The one thing that he did tell me today, and this is kind of a, a loose end, so to speak. He gave me all the numbers, it was eleven thousand dollar increase. And I don't blame the guy. He's not doing any drawings, he's not spending any time onto it until we bring him on board and he has the contract, like most people. I still have a problem with their, their gallons are running from twenty-two thousand gallons to thirty-one thousand gallons. That's a huge difference in cost of underground work. Right now, we've got eighteen thousand gallons in the quote, that was from the original design, or partial original design. This goes up to thirty-seven thousand gallons, it's gonna go up more than eleven thousand dollars.
Right, because you're gonna be, you're gonna be ripping up the entire back, back area of the fire station.
Say it again, sorry.
In order to put in thirty, to bring it up to thirty-one thousand, you're gonna be destroying the entire back area of it.
We're gonna pretty much destroy the back of that.
Yeah.
Anyhow, it's just we got much more we have to do for that much bigger tanks on the ground. So I just gotta make sure you're aware, until he does that design, and he's gonna do the design until we bring him on board, that is still a variable in this monetary.
Hopefully, he'll be able to answer the question of, okay, if that's the variable, what's the cost?
So, wait, in, in what he said, is the new one, the, the rough estimate he kind of told you about, was it twenty-two to thirty-three gallon or something?
No, that's not in his estimate.
That's not in his? I thought the last one was eighteen.
Those are exonerations, those are exonerations, he's not doing any underground.
Ah, okay, okay. Who's doing the underground?
Underground price right now.
That's you.
Is only eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Right.
And again, it's not the bore or waste all sorts of, you know, valuable TV time, yeah. But it's all a calculation of heads, and it's all the mechanical guys who figure out size.
What's the right size, okay.
Pump, you know, all that stuff formulates into how much capacity that we need to store.
Which will add money, okay.
Yes, the difference between a four thousand, sorry, six thousand dollar additional tank. Six thousand gallon additional tank or a thirteen thousand gallon. Big difference in price.
Well, it's gotta get done.
I thank you for the update.
It's all updated.
Okay, thanks.
So we're leaving this at, I'll push in for a paper contract in the next day or so.
And hot.
I'll come to you guys with whatever, again, I can't come to you with a final number until they do their.
Mechanical.
The drawings, and he's not doing it until we sign that contract. So we still have a variable out there on how much a gallon's gonna be underground.
Okay, and as soon as you have it, we will hold a special meeting to discuss it. I don't think we can wait. I keep saying, oh, you know, in two weeks, in two weeks. As soon as you have it, we need to keep on top of this.
Well, I'm gonna have to go.
Great.
So I'll, any info? You might pull up, maybe?
Mm-hmm. Okay, great.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Moving down to item C, review quotes for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty oil and propane.
Jim, do you wanna see if these people would like to leave, or if they wanna hang around? Do you wanna see if they would like to leave or hang around?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we.
You don't need to hang around if you don't want to.
But if you enjoying yourself.
We love having an audience, just the most people we've seen in the audience.
Nice going, Di, they're all leaving.
Well, look, they're all going, it's so much fun.
Tell her you got kicked out of better places than this.
It'd be so boring now.
I just figured.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, good night. Take care.
Good night.
Bye, guys.
Jim, I don't know what you said, but.
I know, I.
What, what? Oh, yeah. Is it something we said? Exactly. Propane, oil.
Okay, there's a Excel file showing the new.
Fourteen, so it's looking like, showing Irving, our town suburban feral rhymes Palmer. And, oh, let's see. Okay, tank inspection, no cause, no service provided, so Irving's looking good on here. Let's see, one, what's BH, oh, burner, BH is what? Burner. Under here, one twenty-nine BH.
Business hours?
Business hours, thank you. One twenty-nine business hours, fifteen dollar consumable. Forty-three tip, gas parts, one forty-nine burner parts, ninety per hour, service calls and puts. Sixteen. So do we total the oil and gas combined on each of these to see what it comes to less? Let's, let's see.
Well, you can actually ju- just look down and.
Well, total oil's in the bottom, and total gas, what we need. I'm just trying to see, hold on.
Irving appears to have the least, the least expensive.
Oh, yeah, on propane.
What is the fee if we don't use at least ninety percent of total ordered product?
That's important.
Do we know?
Yep, it's, it's on you, the, it was all that information there, it's, you get charged whatever you don't use. So I did a little example. Say we only use fifty-nine hundred gallons of oil, so that means we had six hundred we didn't use. We will get charged six hundred for, six, for those gallons that we're not using, plus a thirty cent per gallon fee.
Of not using?
Correct. In other words, your penalty is fifteen hundred and six dollars.
You can't just hold it till next year?
Nope.
No.
Too bad.
However, is it something?
That's, because that's, we, we're gonna, that's too much oil, isn't it, based on our usage?
Well.
A little bit?
We're not sure. We went higher this year because we were doing it for the full year. Normally, we only do it for like, I think, October to April, but we're gonna try and do it for the full year, so we went extra.
What happens if you go lower and you needed five hundred more?
You'll pay the rate rack price.
Which is probably cheaper, because it's probably difference of ten to twelve cents.
And they'll only do, what was it, sixty-five hundred gallons? What is that, the minimum you have to do, sixty-five hundred gallons for the oil?
Correct, yes, sixty-five.
Is that here, or am I not seeing that?
Yeah, it's right there.
Can you show me where?
Oh, the minimum, they require minimum sixty-five hundred?
Thank you, okay. And they won't go a little lower? We don't really, do you think that's a good number?
Their bid is based on sixty-five hundred gallons.
Correct, and if you don't use ninety-five percent of that sixty-five hundred, you have to pay the difference on the gallons that you don't use.
I get that, yes.
Plus a thirty cents increase.
Right.
What happens if you, if you use more than?
If you use more, you pay the right going rate.
Now, our town usually also has a cost to join, and sometimes there's a yearly fee, I don't know if that's in here.
They didn't tell me anything like that.
Need to make sure about that.
Personally, our town, to me, is out of the running.
Yeah, anyway.
Because they're, they're, they cannot provide service.
That's a good reason, yeah.
Quite often.
Yeah.
That's the reason that you're getting a discount, is that they know that you'll also.
We use Palmer now, right?
Yeah, they're.
They're so expensive.
They just aren't.
I don't know.
And that's even, I had emailed the guy after we got this other rate, and he put it down ten cents. That's for that. Okay.
So can we have a motion on the fuel and, number two, fuel and propane?
So which one are you thinking of going with?
I need.
Probably Irving.
I think we, I need a little, I just wanna look it over again, because to do some of the numbers on what happens if we go over, what does that actually mean? It may end up.
Just, okay, let me do it again.
Yeah, but we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns.
We don't know, and you're not gonna know, that's the problem.
It's a guessing game with the new stations.
Right, but with suburban, for example.
I would recommend suburban. There's no penalty.
There's no guessing, no penalty.
No penalties.
That's what I'm wondering, and you're looking at, and let's see, if one forty-nine burner mains, so what is that? One forty-nine burner mains and parts, is that per visit or per hour?
Per hour.
Per hour, on like.
But that propane for Irving, is that a dollar eighteen a gallon?
Yes.
No, it's one, Irving.
It's confusing.
It's one dollar.
A doll, a dollar eighteen?
Yeah.
Propane is a doll.
Twelve.
No, it's one point one two seven.
Irving at the moment, with their bid, number two fuel oil is two dollars and fifteen point five cents per gallon.
Right.
Propane is one dollar eighteen point seven cents per gallon.
Okay, I have the wrong spreadsheet, that's what happened, I'm on the wrong spreadsheet.
Twenty-two.
I have the old one where it's a dollar twelve.
Oh, okay.
So that's why this is a problem.
I did it that way because they provided it that way, so I did the exact numbers that they provided, they want, so.
Now, quite frankly, I think that come the end of the year, what is the feasibility that even if, okay, we're getting sixty-five hundred gallons, and I noticed that there's a, an unused tank at the transfer station, and there are two underground tanks at the new fire rescue station.
I can't seem to get this spreadsheet.
We're looking, we need to find a home to the five hundred gallon.
Double click it.
Yeah, I didn't get an agenda today with a new one.
I think that we, we can probably fit it.
I don't follow what you're trying to do?
Well, what, in looking at Irving, if we, if we, we've got, we've used ninety-four percent of the oil at the end of the contract. We can have them deliver an additional one percent, and it should fit someplace in town. Every tank is not going to be full to capacity.
Does suburban have the penalty like Irving has?
No, and it's not a minimum.
But, so if we use six hundred less, we're not gonna get charged for the six hundred, we're only gonna use what we, get charged what we pay for.
Hold on a minute.
Pay for what we use. That's, so that's a no-brainer then, yeah.
Right, but with suburban, you're talking twenty-seven cents more per gallon.
No, no, but let's look at the whole site, so you're looking at, like, twenty thousand total Irving, you're looking roughly sixteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, I don't have my right spreadsheet. You're looking a little bit more.
Sixteen one twenty to fourteen four.
You're looking at.
Looks like fifteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred.
How often did we have maintenance last year for burner parts and maintenance? Did we do it a lot?
We have to do it at least once a year.
Last year at the old station, we had it a lot.
So Irving is cheaper for that.
Yeah, you're looking at twenty dollars less per hour for Irving versus suburban.
So the, the fear is that, like, not using all sixty-five hundred gallons.
Correct.
And what?
So with suburban, you're not gonna pay any penalties, Irving, you are.
And the worst penalty you came up with was a figure like twelve fifty?
That wasn't the worst, that was just giving you a guess.
Right.
And you're saying that there are other tanks that we can, like, we won't, we use this much, but if we have that, okay, let's see.
I don't think they're gonna do that.
Let's say we use fifty-five hundred gallons, but we have gallon, we have capacity in the oil tanks.
Exactly.
So does that mean anything, like, don't we just leave it in the tanks? Or fill them up?
That's what we do is.
Isn't that allowed?
No, what you're asking them to do is, I have five hundred extra gallons, instead of you nailing me for twenty-five cents a gallon, I want you to go top off every tank, and so it's less money I have to pay.
Exactly.
Well, we'll just see if that's permitted.
We, we have a whole tank at the transfer station.
Correct.
That is not in use. I'm guessing those are usually two hundred and forty gallons, or two hundred and fifty gallons.
Ah.
Two seventy, the oil tanks, two seventy-five.
How do you get it out of that tank and put it in?
Yeah, that's a good question, once it's, the, the transfer station, then what do we do with it?
That ain't gonna work.
Then you just have oil in it.
Before you keep going, the one at the transfer station is propane.
Oh, okay.
They used it for that old generator that doesn't work.
Well, that's not my fault they didn't maintain it.
So, don't even think about the transfer station, they use electric heaters.
Oh, okay.
Is the propane the same deal if we don't use gallons?
Yes, five thousand.
It's ninety, it's ninety-five percent of total product.
Right. So we're talking five thousand gallons of propane and sixty-five hundred gallons of number two fuel.
And do you have the list of what we used last year?
It's on, it's on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, I don't know why I don't have this spreadsheet, I have the older one.
Do you have the agenda up?
It's under two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
I did, but I don't have an agenda that's clicking.
Bouncy's numbers, what we used last year?
Last, last year in fuel oil, we used five thousand eighty-nine point, uh, let's call it five thousand ninety gallons of fuel. of fuel oil, and we used 2,657 gallons of propane.
Yeah, so having 5,000 is a lot.
Yeah, but they just moved into the fire station and.
Remember we went over that? I said we, but we had a full winter. Oh, I see.
No, they, they didn't, really.
So we didn't have a full winter, so we don't know.
When did we move into the fire station?
Yeah, we had a full winter last year.
Yeah, I think we had a full winter last year. I was wondering, I thought, what you thought, and then someone said we did have a full winter.
Yeah, we did.
So that that is a fairly, the only thing that's gonna change is when the pump station comes, which is gonna be.
We moved in before the snowflake.
DYE maybe, or oil? That's the only thing that's gonna go with the usage.
That, that will use.
That's like next year.
Yeah, but that, that will use.
So if you wanna go with Irving, I would recommend we go back to them and change the oil to 5,000.
I agree with you completely.
And I bet you it's gonna increase the cost.
Let's find out quickly.
And if we do that, then you're gonna, again, be pushing off this and going from October.
Yeah, which isn't good.
The problem is, is their bids are only good for a short period of time.
Exactly. I think that if we do that, we have to do it immediately. Like, someone, one of us, you, whoever you want to, calls Irving, double checks, and goes with the, I'm willing, like you, Larry, I'm kind of worried that the suburban seems like potentially a better, I need a little more time to look at the numbers, a better plan, because once we have a full year, we may pay more, not a lot, but once we have a full year of an accurate assessment of what we're really using.
You don't know.
But right after this year, we'll know, and we'll be in a much better position for bids, where we'll know what we're using, and in addition, Dead River.
So either pay now or pay later with the two companies.
This is only for one year.
Yeah, exactly. And Irving could work, but then it could backfire. That's the problem. Irving could work or it could backfire big time.
Exactly.
Which is not good.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're talking about lowering it to 5,000 from 6,500, we're looking at the potential of 1,500 gallons of fuel oil that we're gonna pay for, that we're never gonna see.
Never gonna use, so that's not, yeah, we have to, so either, that's a quick.
I mean, it's a guessing game right now.
Best stations efficient. I mean, it's not gonna suck a lot of oil or propane or, I mean, there's no oil over there, it's all propane.
Suburban, 16, 120, 145, 145.
If we've only used a little over 5,000 gallons.
6,500.
In 2018.
But you based the, uh, the oil on the old station too, correct?
I think it was included, roughly.
Which, and we're not gonna use that this year.
Wait, hold on, you'll see it here.
Isn't in there?
Nope. It wasn't in there. First, here you go.
The old station's not in there?
No. See, look.
Nope.
No.
I thought Kim, 6,500 gallons, I think was based on that, wasn't it?
Well, no, we based it on a full year, and we thought we would increase it a little just to be on the safe side in case it was a lousy winter, but if you're gonna go with Irving, I don't recommend.
I think that.
We do that. We should lower it.
Yeah, I think, the more I'm thinking about it, I would agree with Larry's assessment, and use, wait, what's the other one? Suburban for this year, because we're still saving. How much are we, like, so the town knows by going with suburban, we're looking at almost a $3,000 savings with no downside from our current oil use. Right? I mean, if I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but we're looking at a significant savings by using suburban.
Are you Irving or suburban?
Neither, no. I can, we can, if you wanna make a decision, I would say suburban.
I would too.
If you don't wanna make a decision tonight, and you want me to go back to Irving and ask them to lower it to 5,000 and see what you come up with, that's fine.
I would, I would say that we make a motion to go with suburban unless we do a pending.
Make the motion, okay. Make the motion, go with suburban. The contract for 2018, 19.
Okay, I agree, okay.
Larry, why don't you make?
You make it, 'cause you're all ready to go. You've got the verbiage.
I'll make the motion to go with suburban for the propane and oil for the years. Is it gonna be 2019, 20?
Yes.
I don't have to do a dollar amount, correct?
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Fine.
2019 to 2020.
2019 to 2020, okay.
So it'll take effect October 1st then at this point?
Right, whenever you talk to them about when it starts, right.
Okay, October 1st, it's September, or whatever they give us.
Yeah. And I'd like to, like, get, just do the addition so the town knows what a savings this is from last year, 'cause it's a big savings.
Well, until we get the full year, we're not gonna have.
No, but I'm looking at Palmer. No, I'm talking about Palmer's rates, who we have used so far. This is, this bid is coming significant, but that by doing this process the way that it's been done, we're looking at about a $2,500 savings for the year, if, by going with a new bid.
Yeah, that's.
That's, I'm just saying, that's good.
That's the reason that we set up the bid on.
But I'm sure, like, you know, if anyone does watch this, we're saving money. Yippee!
You need all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Oh, you second. He's gonna say it.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Hey, we're at the end.
If there's any leftover oil, just bring it to my house.
Oh, wait, there's one other thing, you guys, that, wait, 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 Sub Irving doesn't, I think suburban does too. In general, most of the contracts offer town employees discounts on their own home oil and propane, that you should just look into, for nice savings, which could help people who work the town.
Yeah, Diane, you check it.
Okay, moving right along from.
Palmer did that.
Yeah, so just.
Palmer did it?
Yep.
Let us move along to update on central fire station zoning options.
I don't have a click through.
Nancy spoke to the ZVA.
Well, we can't do it, right?
I called Tom McElroy, and Tom McElroy said, as far as he knows, they don't have that jurisdiction.
Yeah, I remember that.
It's always been town meeting vote. And I agree, as long as I've been here, it's always been a warrant article to rezone.
So we can't sell it till March?
Well, we can sell it, and they would probably have to go through the zoning.
Has to stay commercial if we sell it?
It's not commercial now, it's a residential.
So it has to go to residential if we sell it?
Right, and they can, they have to apply themselves.
They can turn it into four condos.
Which isn't that hard to apply, right?
But if it has to be a warrant article, we gotta make a decision to put it on. If it doesn't sell between now and then, we should probably put it on.
Well, first of all, they're gonna have to change the listing because it's being listed as being commercial.
Right. Have to change it to residential.
We can't claim that it's commercial.
I know.
All right, we can't do it, we can't do it.
Then don't, don't sell it then. Hold on to it until after town meeting.
Or if someone, a miracle comes and wants to buy it as is, let it go on.
Four one-bedroom condos.
I don't think there's been any bids on it.
That's gonna cost a lot of money to do with that place. That's a tear down.
Can we put on the next agenda, or, well, hopefully, there'll be five of us, unless people here are comfortable, we can either pull it off the market.
If we can't sell it, I'd rather pull it off.
We can sell it, we just can only sell.
Or change it to residential.
Right.
Wait until you get the other members, I think, the next agenda.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, let everybody give their input.
Why would we wanna take it off the market? What harm is there? I'm just curious.
But we can change it to residential.
Why not leave it and see what happens?
Because of the moment, it's being listed as commercial property and.
And it's not, okay, okay, so it has to be relisted.
We can just vote on, have the, call the realtor to change it to residential.
I would think that makes a lot of sense.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I second the motion.
And then, we, when we get a full board.
Mr. Foot just moved to call the realtor and have the listing changed to residential A.
Which is the appropriate listing.
And then when we get the full board, then we can vote on the other one.
I seconded that already.
That was seconded by Selectman Michaels. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Can't sell it as commercial, might as well change.
Who knows what'll happen? And the person who comes, they can apply to get it to commercial again.
So you understand too that that's gonna lower your price, just so you know.
Well, I, that's.
I don't think we've got a half a million anyway.
No.
So we're going to discuss this again with the rest of the board.
Exactly, at the next.
But in the meantime, we can't list it as something that it's not.
Right.
Or you're saying we're taking it off the market.
Well, if somebody wants to come in and put a garage in there, they can. So it's misrepresentation.
Completely, yeah.
It looks like a perfect garage, three, four stalls, lot of sub stairs.
You can't, well, there are ways that that can be done, however.
Oh, so you can.
They can sell it with a caveat for exemption in the purchase and sale agreement.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have to go.
To authorize that the sale, purchase and sale agreement is predicated on the ZVA authorizing them for commercial use in a residential area. That means that they have to go to the ZVA. If the ZVA says yes, the purchase and sale agreement has been satisfied and therefore goes forward. ZVA says no, that person walks away and could ask the town to reimburse them.
So even if it's listed on the residential, they can still ask that question to the ZVA.
Exactly.
So.
However, it's not an unfair trade practice to list it at its actual.
Value.
Zoning, no.
Uh-oh. Where it's currently zoned at.
Saying it's commercial property at the moment is.
It's misleading, untrue.
Is improper sales protection.
Okay.
Moving on.
So we're moving to proper sales technique.
So moving along to update on town hall flagpole.
Yeah, residential.
I have no click through, so I'm gonna have to look on yours.
There's nothing to click.
Nancy, you have any on the flagpole?
Yeah, at the last meeting, Jim and Garnier asked us to have the inspector look at it, and the inspector says it might last till spring, so it's not a necessity at this point.
Might last.
But it won't kill anybody.
It's like anything else. A hurricane comes through, nothing's, you know, strong wind. So he thinks.
Yeah, there are trees out back that could come over, and there's big trees over here that could come down.
All right, so we're gonna table that till spring?
We might, we might wanna consider budgeting something for it for next year, 'cause it's not gonna last forever, that's for sure.
So we'll table it to a later time as the budget hearings approach. How's that?
Uh, next item, give me a second, Mike, is the recreation old home day program quote.
Okay, so the, where are those gonna go? Does anybody know? Those are pamphlets to advertise old home day, right?
No, I think it's what the program, to give out to people when they come in.
Okay.
Or is it gonna be done like Kingston, where they get mailed to the individual households?
I do not believe so.
Oh, okay.
No.
Still can't get it there?
So they're looking to, for 500 copies, black and white copies.
Oh, yeah, but I don't have that agenda. Even my updated has no click through.
Diane is talking to you guys.
I'm sorry.
So they're looking for 500 copies, black and white. The total cost is $345.
They asking for us for another budget?
Do they have the money in their budget?
Yep.
So why are they asking us?